We will now go to Commission at Matters, Public Requests, Item Two, Letter B, Discuss Future Events at Founder's Ranch. Brian Case, New Resident.
Good evening, I'm Brian Case.
Good evening.
I must say that the Commission has changed quite a bit in 16 years that I haven't been here. I'm impressed with the formality of it. I have a problem basically with SAS in Northwest Torrance County. And I think that I am very justified in bringing this to the Commission's attention. Also, this road that I live on, 16 years ago was declared private by the Torrance County Commission. It was declared private for trespassing. And ever since then, I've been told by the Sheriff's Office that even if I had a description of the license number, that they couldn't do anything about trespassing. And I have to question that because of what went on in Albuquerque with the red light cameras. They had the vehicle, they had the license number, they did not have the driver. And I would like to see some enforcement on those letters that I got from the Torrance County Commission. Also, as far as SAS goes, they came in here years ago, and they also said that they were going to do things the cowboy way. And I'm not real sure, I've never been a cowboy. But let's put it this way, I've lived down south all my adult life, southwest Texas and here. I've lived here 26 years. And the stampede that we just had two weeks ago on Saturday, that might have been the cowboy way, but I've never seen a cowboy like the stampede. It was called the Warrior Dash. If you look at the map that I gave them, each of the SAS gates that the state said they would never use for business, and there is, for all intents and purposes, no way out except by going down Wantamoss into Burnaleo County. Now, if SAS is so good through Torrance County, and they make such good money off well, the events and taxes, et cetera, why can't the county commissioners put out a little money, extend Wantamoss all the way over to Community Road, or pave Barkin Road all the way out to 66 and they paved it into SAS Gate? And there is a road, I'd call it a pig trail to be nice, that goes out of Mountain Valley that the county could improve for the resident. I find it kind of strange that religion should be discussed most of the evening, and yet most people in Mountain Valley and the hands of Mormons, et cetera, pass there, work five days a week. If they wanted to go to church on Sunday, and so on and so forth, we all haul off. There's only one day to do it. And you wouldn't have done it two weeks ago Saturday, because it was wall-to-wall traffic. There is no infrastructure for big SAS events like what's going on. And the thing that I really felt was that we were trapped with no police protection. An officer could have been posted east of the gate from SAS and kept people who didn't live there off the private roads, privately maintained roads, instead of allowing them to come up here terrorizing and looking around sticking their nose where it doesn't belong. You know, I think SAS could come up with enough money off an event like that to pay a Torrance County deputy to sit out there all day and do nothing but with that amount of traffic that was there. I would have told the traffic was wall-to-wall from their gates all the way down to 66 and 217. I've heard a lot of excuses, and most of them came from SAS members or the deputies or whatever. But I'm thinking for a public event, excuses don't really cut it. They need to be taken care of. We had fire pits out there at the Warrior Dash, I guess is what proper name is. I think we've been in a drought now for how long? And for somebody to have fun and that to get out of hand, I know firefighters consider firefighting dancing with the devil. Their terms, not mine. I don't know. I'm looking at the conditions to the issuance of a conditional use permit for a single-action society, shooting society, excuse me. And there's supposed to be, the last item is a certificate of insurance with Torrance County for adequate liability insurance for public events held on subject property. I'm wondering if that liability includes my house, my neighbor's house? I have fire insurance, and I've been through a fire. And I know fire insurance does not cover everything I have. So am I included in the Torrance County liability insurance if something does go wrong? We were totally cut off from getting in or getting out of our property practically. We could have had traffic for a couple hours. I watched an Accotash paramedic unit coming out of SAS, lights and sirens, and when I saw them, they weren't on a SAS property. It took them 10 minutes to get to 217 and Wantamoss. I have to question whether anybody down here in Torrance County really cares. We pay our taxes in Torrance County. And the sheriff's department was nowhere to be seen. And it was just a joke that Saturday. And excuses don't cut it when there's a public event like that, and you don't have any way out. Took me 20 minutes, 10 minutes to 7:00 in the morning to go out to 217, got two letters in the mailbox out there, 217 and Wantamoss, and get back to my house. And anybody who knows me knows I don't drive like an old lady. But I can't get through a massive car. I talked to the foreman of SAS yesterday, and he said, "Well, the state police were late getting there, they didn't get there until 11 o'clock," et cetera, et cetera. Excuses don't cut. You know, these events are supposed to be planned. I'm sure that a lot of people made a lot of money off the Warrior Dash. I'm not sure how much St. Jude Tots it'll make, but we were held hostage in the area we live in because of it. And I would like, I'm told that it's going to transpire again next April, and they're going to have it all well in hand and everything. I would like to know what the county has gotten out of the Warrior Dash event, permit-wise, and why the money that Torrance County makes off SAS events can't be used for infrastructure to help the people from Northwest Torrance County. So we're not held hostage.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, for your questions, for your paperwork and the documentation that you've provided to us this evening. We're now at the table for questions, either of Mr. Case, or also for anyone that would like to speak for or against this, and also if there's anyone from SAS that would like to speak as well. Would you like to speak, sir?
Yes, I would.
Okay, please come forward.
My name is Jim Donas. I'm a neighbor of hers, and I too was trapped in there. But one, something that really, really disturbed me was their open fire pits. They had two open fire pits at this event, huge open fire pits, we're in the midst of a drought. I'm hesitant of using a barbecue grill, and they have two open fire pits. They had 12,000 people out there in one narrow little road that two cars can barely pass on each other on, with 12,000 people. We were expecting 20,000. If they had 20,000 people, they would have been 4,000. If a fire broke out, a gust of wind carried some of those embers, it would have been a disaster. You could have had hundreds, perhaps even thousands die, because we were all trapped. The fire department, there was no fire truck available on site. The fire department couldn't have got in because of the panic that would have ensued, the one narrow little road would have been blocked immediately, so no one could have had an in or out. It just really, really disturbs me that they threatened everybody's lives, ours, you know, those of us who live out there, and all of their invited guests, all 4,000 of them, with these open fire pits that a gust of wind could have created a disaster. Like Brian said, they used the Wantamoss Gate, which they stood here before the Commission back four years ago, or so, five years ago, whatever it was. And they swore to the Commission they would not use the Wantamoss Gate. Everything was going to be on the Barton Gate, the Barton Road Gate. That's where the governor paved the road right to their, right to their gate. He put in three miles of pavement right to their gate. The residents get any pavement, we got their roads, but SAS got a pavement right to their gate. The, also, the loud music that comes from there. They had promised us there was going to be a quiet subdue thing. Thursday night, they were blasting music. I live directly across the road from them. I could hear the music inside my house with doors and windows closed. One of their own members who live a half mile away, they could hear the music when he stepped outside, a half mile away. And that's through forests, and they live down in the valley. And they could, they could hear the music from that far away. That music went on Thursday night. It went all day Friday and Friday night until the person who heard it, we called them, and they called over there and told us to turn it down at the Saturday morning, and it was up and rolling again. These are events that deprive us who live there of our use of our property, the happiness of, you know, the quiet comfort, you know, living here in your house. It's all destroyed with them. They were going to, their shooting, according to them at the event, they said they're shooting six guns that just make a lot of pop, you know, the glorified firecrackers, how they describe it. Just makes a little bit of a pop, and, you know, we wouldn't bother anybody. Well, now they've opened the thing up, and it was going to be just four times a year for a few days each time. Now they've opened it up to public shooting. They put in a public shooting range. I don't know if they came to give you the permission to do this or not, but they have a public shooting range. Five, six days a week, every week, they're shooting out there, and it's not a little pop, now it's like cameras going off. There's shotguns, there's high-powered weapons, you know, it's, it's a nightmare out there now. They were going to have four events a year, and the longest event was going to be their End of the Trail, which was going to be a four-day event. That End of the Trail is now nine days. They've more than doubled the length of the event that they told, told the previous commissioners that they were going to have. You know, it's just, you know, I'm not against SAS as they sat here four, five, six years ago, whatever it was, and described their operation. If that's what they were, that's fine. I don't have any problem with that. But they may be bonded to something that's committed to a nightmare. And, you know, that, I mean, it's...
Thank you, sir, very much. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Debbie Donas. As my husband just told you, when we were here with the Commission, after everything was signed for the Single Action Shooting Society to become my neighbor, a public meeting was held after. We were given no input into our new neighbors. The governor was very kind, we now have a little west dirt road to go over. They did promise us four meetings, four events a year. The Warrior Dash has nothing, absolutely nothing, to do with single-action shooting. I would like to know how they modified their terms with this Commission to have an event such as they had two weeks ago. We knew nothing about it. I work in Albuquerque, I work in an elementary school, one of my teachers said, "How close am I going to be to your house?" She explained to me what they were doing, and I said, "Well, you're right across the road." 12,000 people. They had no idea if there was another exit from that property. They had a rent-a-cop at that gate. He answered them truthfully, "I have no idea if there's another way out." So not only were they going back to Ward, to 17, they were going down into our valley. 15 minutes later, they were coming back. This is never an event that should have been held at their property. It has nothing to do with them. We were told they would not leave it out. I looked Ken Amorzano in the face, standing on that side of the room, and I said, "How many times will you rent it out?" He said, "None. Four events a year, that's all." Someone's lied to us. I need to know if this Commission gave them permission to do that. We were not notified, we were not warned, so that we can adjust our schedules. I find it awfully strange, much as Jim and Brian and Jerry do, that this was told to us that it would be a boon for the tri-county area. I want you to know, our corner of Torrance County is seeing nothing good come out of this arrangement. Absolutely nothing. If there is any benefit that Torrance County has gotten, we haven't seen it. If people are going to go to dinner from their events, I promise you, they go to Albuquerque. So I'm sure Burnaleo County is seeing quite a bit. Santa Fe County may see some. Torrance County and Moore Yard, you may see some, because you have hotels for those that don't have campers. SAS's biggest event that we have seen in eight years was probably 500 campers, if that. They're very small events, they're relatively quiet. They allowed no alcohol, alcohol sales was allowed. They got a waiver somehow to serve alcohol at the event, which they're not supposed to do. I would ask the Commission to tell us how they got the approval to do this, and why it's already on the calendar for next year, they're coming back. Nobody asked about us, because there's 50 families. I've spoken with the sheriff, he was out there all day. He was as angry as I was. If you lived there, you would understand. We do things that people don't do. We haul our water. We have no electricity. The power company wants $20,000 to bring in electricity on my property. We have solar, we have wind. We do so by choice. I would ask you to come out and look at what you've given us. Have any of you ever seen the property? Have you seen the impact it has on us? I think you would think differently. They got the shooting range without any notice of us, we saw some. Are they coming back to this council, asking for permission, and again, you'd just like to deal with what you do? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? From staff that has any answers to the questions that were brought up this evening as far as permitting? Sheriff, were you there?
I was there, and to clarify a couple of the statements made. Sheriff's Department was there. We did have deputies there for the interior, state police, and their own security firm controlled the outside of the facility. I did observe the traffic issues, and it was a gridlock. But to state that the Sheriff's Department was not there is not true. We were there, we had adequate supplies as far as medical, fire units, additional resources there, on our part.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Steve?
We have no special event permit process in play in the county. And originally, the SAS people, or the Red Frog people, the promotioners of the event, has told us that they were only going to have 2,000 people out there. And as usual with these types of events, they get clearance from the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, on what they can do and what they can't do, and that's about it. As far as selling liquor out there, the county does have that vendor's permit, temporary vendor's permit, which I and the county clerk found there was an application for that, where they have to have the Commission approval, but I think at that time, well, I don't know what happened because of that.
We did.
But as far as our ordinance is going, that, you know, that's pretty much it.
If I could add just one of those, the Sheriff's Department didn't never advise or inform what they could do. That event was going to take place with or without us, and they never asked what their restrictions were from the Sheriff's Department. The only thing that wasn't, we were involved in was when they came to the Commission for the alcohol sales and what our security or capabilities were going to be there. But as far as them approaching us on any, what they could do on the property or outside of the property, we were never informed, and it was advised that they were having this event with or without the Sheriff's Department there.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
I think a lot of it, I mean, they were expecting 2,000 people. Prior to the event, I heard numbers upward of 5,000 to 10,000 people that were going to be out there. And since the event, I've heard upwards of 26,000 people actually went in and were out, maybe not all there at one time. I do know I spoke with the Fire Marshal prior to it, and he was going to have a presence there, the Sheriff's Department was going to have a presence there, but it was a lot of unknowns. Mr. Case called me about two weeks ago, is that right, sir? And I spoke with him at length on it. And since then, I've spoken with Robert Anaya, Santa Fe, I've spoken with Amerella because of his expertise in roadways and how we can help improve the infrastructure. And I'm going to meet with Wayne Johnson of Burnaleo County, Robert Anaya, and myself at the Commission meeting up in last May, June. We're going to sit down and try to figure out how we can get maybe some money to improve the infrastructure there. But one of my ideas was, if this event is going to take place, then I think that the Warrior Dash needs to take care of the public that lives there. You know, whether it be paving the road, or whether it be setting up sound walls, whatever it may be, I think it kind of took people by surprise. I know Dennis and Ted were both there personally, and they could probably attest to that. Might have been confusion or might not. I know I spoke with the Sheriff on people getting out. People that knew the back roads knew how to get out easier, you know, than people, and that's what we'd like to improve. So we are working on that aspect of it, Mr. Case.
What back roads? They're private roads, and I didn't get an answer on no trespassing either, after coming. But no, I think the private roads are an issue. Nobody pays for those except the resident. They're not county roads. So what gives anybody else the right to be on those roads, whether they live out in Torrance County, or whether they come out from Albuquerque and are law?
Mr. Case, I don't have any idea what roads they took. I'm not familiar with that out there. I've been out in that area, but to tell you, you know, what private roads they took, I'm not aware. I know in speaking with Sheriff Wyatt, it was an absolute nightmare for traffic, and that's something that needs to be really looked at, the traffic control plan, everything coming in.
My point is, they had to put one deputy, not a rent-a-cop, on their eastern gate, one Torrance County deputy. I don't care how many deputies were inside, I don't care what went on inside, except for the fire. But our roads were being trespassed on, and the Torrance County Sheriff was called numerous times and did not respond. I was running the tractor up and down Mormon Road that day, and I know very well that no Torrance County Sheriff came up. None.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just to continue to keep our meetings formal and controlled, if you want to respond or ask a question of the Commission, just please come back up to the podium. Did you have a comment to respond to?
I do. I am actually out there for End of Trail, and I've been out there for the last five years. Are you, is it, as you go down Wantamoss, when the pavement stops, and then you can make the left to go up Barton and then enter, is it from that point going west is what your, what your main concern is? I mean, sorry.
Sir, before I go to the podium, could you also just maybe approach so that you can show me on the map? The gate that you were told would not be used, that way I have a kind of clear picture. This road here?
Okay, so then Barton's here.
I'm up here.
I know, it's worth Barton. Barton's over here, okay, so. So if you come up Barton, and then you have Wantamoss, then this, this from here, from here over to this, down. Right, so how I normally come up Barton Road, when the gate's here, that's where this road goes to the right track, and that's all that that road is supposed to be. I'm actually here.
I live here. There is no, no way. This road would go down into Mountain Valley. There is no way. It's a lot of things to the left now. I'm saying it could have been one.
So you're saying to not let anybody continue on to...
One sheriff right here, after the gate, which they're not supposed to use, but they do. We're trying to close the barn door out, put the towels around. We're also trying to keep the towels from coming back in.
Okay, thank you very much. I am very sorry for what you guys had to experience two weeks ago. I've heard a lot of good things about the Warrior Dash. I mean, I'm hearing the personal impact that it had on your families. And I am sorry for maybe not getting a clearer picture before I voted on the alcohol permit, because I did vote in favor of that. And I certainly would like you to hold me accountable for my vote on that issue. But I think, as you said, we are now at the other side of it. And I feel that the best thing that we can do at this point is something that I would like to have research done from staff possibly would be to look at the minutes to where they did state some of the promises that they made to you as residents, also in regards to that gate. And we have those documents, and we'll pull them. But I think maybe it would, and I don't think SASS would be opposed to this. I don't know anyone personally on the board. But possibly coming together and having your commissioner or the county manager facilitate something to where everyone can come together and say, "This is how I was impacted." Look at the pros and cons, and maybe give them some recommendations as to how we can make some changes in the future. As to limiting them, whether or not they can have the Warrior Dash in the future, I, you know, I really don't want to speak to that until I see what was agreed on by the previous commission that did approve this property to come into place. And so, we could leave here all upset. I know you were personally impacted, and I'm sorry for that. But what we can do is come together collectively and hopefully try to put something in place that will help us to be a safer county, a business-friendly county, a resident-friendly county. And I would encourage you to please come to the table. Commissioner Fryberg, we'd like to facilitate that. And he has already taken steps to call some people together. So, I think that we have some more questions that need to be answered. But we do want to answer your questions, and we do want to come up with a safe plan for you. But giving you an answer tonight without having all of the players at the table and all of the appropriate documents, I think we wouldn't be serving you well if we just tried to give you an answer and then wasn't able to provide that for you. So, that's kind of where I stand on this issue. I'd be happy to put it back on another agenda to give you specific responses. But I think we need to have everybody come together before we can make some recommendations.
I think, too, for Ronnie and I, we weren't here when SASS approached the commission six years ago. And so, the promises that were made to the commission then of what was going to transpire throughout the years, you know, I'd like to see that documentation of what was actually agreed upon. And if it was just four events a year and, because then in that case, then we need to hold true to what was then said six years ago.
I'll have that documentation in the manager's office tomorrow morning, along with the communications we had with Cynthia Yang, the promoter for the Warrior Dash event.
And I also think, because something good can come up, is we can actually come together and say, "Okay, we don't have the special event permit." And maybe if we did have that in place, we could have, you know, some steps that go along with that to see the impact that it would have on the residents around any property in the county that wanted to have a large event. So, we can certainly learn from this and grow from this and make something better for everybody involved. That's it.
Ma'am, I'd like to stress one thing. You have the map. You can see that we are at dead-end roads basically. We do not, and the sheriff agreed, have the infrastructure to handle people. Two ain't no, people who live there are hauling their water. And I find it kind of ironic that if somebody works five days in Albuquerque, he comes out there, and they have Saturday, if religion plays hard as they like. And they have, I would rate, you didn't do any work from Friday night sundown till Saturday night sundown. So, you know, if you want to look at it the same way on Saturday or Sunday, and you work five days weekend down, and you only have Saturday to do your work, like haul your water, get your groceries, et cetera, normal living things, and the road is packed like sardine, and you want to observe your salary, where are you at? We don't have infrastructure. There is nothing. But this commission is going to do the Burnley County road or Burnley and Santa Fe County road, that they want to use Barton. And there is two ways that Torrance County themselves can do. They can take Wantamoss out to Community Road, or they can go down to the end of Mount Valley and make that a county road going by Red Hand Range. But until we have the infrastructure, I don't see how these events can be allowed here. You know, it's not practical roadworks.
Well, I think you, you make a very good point, sir. And when it comes to infrastructure, that certainly is something that, that we can work on. And so, I, I'm sure that Commissioner Fryberg, this is in his district. I know that he's going to look at all of the options available as far as infrastructure and working with other counties. And if they don't come to the table, but we have to at least put that out there. And if they're going to try and do this event again next year, I know these two commissioners will be at the table at that time, and I know that they will. Your concerns will not fall on deaf ears. And we will look at the infrastructure. We will look at the promises that were made in the past. We will look at safety. I know how important it is to the sheriff. He had a lot of staff there. I know that, you know, it just wasn't planned right, it looks like to me. But I think we can work on it. And we have until the next event to prove how important it is to us that everybody's voice is heard. So, I please urge you to at least give us the opportunity to show you that we are going to be proactive in this. Thank you for being here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, folks.
Is there anyone that could copy of this paperwork, Cynthia, from SASS?
Sure, just contact the manager's office, and they can tell you the process to request that documentation. Thank you.